Okay, it's five o'clock on Monday, June 16th. We'll call this regular city council meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everyone, and if you'd please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call them down.
Don.
Here.
Kathy.
Here.
Rodney.
Brad.
Here.
Rodney.
Here.
Jessica.
Here.
Entertain a motion to approve today's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
A motion from Brad, second from Jessica, any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Don.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Jessica.
Yes.
Motion carried. Across the mayor's desk, I would at this time invite Chief Bo Miller up to the podium. He has a little discussion about electric scooters and bikes, and also Bo is our sergeant-at-arms, and comes everybody, so we appreciate you being here.
Yeah, well, I appreciate you guys letting me be up here. I just want to talk a little bit with you guys and obviously public, anybody, about the scooters and bikes that were out there. Obviously, summer's in full swing, and we love it. We love seeing everybody out there, kids out there riding their bikes, head to the parks and the pools and doing all that. But with that, we're starting to see a lot more, we see a lot more electric scooters out there. This isn't just electric scooters. We want to look at safety on all of them. The last thing we want is any of these kids getting hurt at all. So just a few things to remember with bicycles, scooters, you can't ride double on them unless the bike is designed for two. You know, we're seeing a lot of scooters where two people are standing on it while they're going down the road. And we just want to make sure, we're gonna, we're gonna start, you know, really educating. We want to make sure the kids are stopped, stop doing that. If you're gonna be on one, that's fine, but you can't, you know, you can't be hauling other people. So we just want to make sure that's one thing that we're watching. Sometimes, you know, and I've seen it, you know, when I'm in uniform or in a squad car, people sometimes do things a little better. But even when I'm off duty, I'm starting to see more and more kids are zipping through intersections. If we can really work on, you know, follow the rules, just like a vehicle, you gotta stop, stop in intersections, looking both ways. Guys, you gotta use, you know, if there's a bike lane, let's use a bike lane. The one big one that we're really starting to see, and actually today I was able to talk to some kids, they just weren't aware of it, and it's downtown. In our downtown area, scooters, bikes, nobody can be on the sidewalks. The businesses are too close to the sidewalks, so if doors are coming open, there's too, too big of a risk for people getting hit and stuff like that happening. And then, you know, bikes can go fast, scooters can go fast. So you gotta remember downtown, and we are gonna put something out a little more, so you'll be able to see it on our Facebook page, to see the, see the certain roads. We're gonna get that stuff out there. But right now, we really want to just educate everyone, families, parents, everybody like that. And just be safe. You know, the one thing I haven't noticed, you know, bikes, kids are really good about wearing helmets. You know, this is, this is just a safety thing I recommend. You know, these scooters have really small wheels. You know, when they're going over stuff, boy, they could catch real quick on something. You know, safety, think of helmets, think of that stuff. Backpacks, a lot of these kids, this is a great way to get to school. You know, make sure that backpack's sealed on tight, put it on, you know. Sometimes you see stuff half hanging off, those are safety. You know, a lot of times, if you're tightening, there's, tightening your backpack, there's stuff hanging. Make sure that stuff's tied up, so it's not getting caught in anything. We just want to really make sure we have a safe summer all around for everybody. You know, the one thing where as the summer progresses, you know, we can't, if we start seeing reckless stuff happening, you know, we do have the right to take that stuff away if, if we're having repeat offenders. We don't want to get to that. We want to really just educate and make sure these people are, the kids are, get into their events safe, get into the parks safe, library, wherever they're headed. We just want a good, safe summer for all around. So I just wanted to kind of talk about that. We're gonna have kind of some more to follow, and yeah, yes.
One thing you could add to your education last week, there are kids running their scooters down this alley back here.
Okay.
It's a little small, they get a lot of speed and then cross the street. With all the traffic in this alley and the trucks and everything, they try to detach them from doing that.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's gonna be a day.
Yep, and that's, that's that crossing, looking both ways, that's a, that's a really important thing. Today it happened, I was actually, I was having lunch, and I was just about done with lunch, and I saw four scooters going by with five people. Well, and, and they were going downtown. So I was able, like, quick get done with lunch, and I found them, and I was able to stop and talk to them, and they, they just said they weren't aware. And so that's kind of where we're at. We want to, you know, get this education out there as much as we can prior to hopefully, I mean, we never want to see anything ever happen to anybody and any accidents, but we just want to make sure safety first, and everyone's always thinking about it. So, if you guys have questions, absolutely.
Should they be driving on the road then and not sidewalks? Or does it?
Off, off the, around town, they can be on the sidewalks, not downtown.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I recommend staying off of downtown on the side, you know, on the, get on the side streets. But off down, when you're not downtown, they can be on the sidewalks. But there's bike lanes, use the bike lanes when you can on all that.
Thank you.
All right, all right, thanks, guys.
Good safety message there.
I'll just add that if you're concerned, those are in our city code under chapter 10.56 regarding scooters and bicycles. So we'll be putting that information citing that first section too, so people can read all the rules and regulations regarding operating the vehicles.
Good, thank you. And at this time, I think Joanne Rubke-Bode, our communications manager, has some information she'd like to share about Founder's Day.
I do have some information I'd like to share, thank you, everybody. So we've been working a lot with our premier sponsor, the Algonah Area Chamber of Commerce. So you get ready for Founder's Day, it's coming right up here. Dates are second weekend in July as usual, so just a few highlights. Thursday night will kind of be our usual voices from the past, and we're really glad that the Cassup County Historical Society works with us to provide some of the, well, they do all of the planning and recruiting them for the skits that night. And then there will also be racing out at the track that night. Then Friday, things really get going. We're keeping a lot of our traditional Friday night favorites, the street dance, we'll be doing the parade again, the Shriners Car Show, we have me and the Downtown Walk on Thornton, which has been very popular. Friday night food trucks will be there in addition to the local restaurants and bars that we have right there on State Street. So we'll have a lot of options for people to get out and enjoy. We're pleased to have a lot of local bands joining us for Founder's Day this year. So it'll be the Mob Rockers, followed by Kiefer and Scott, so we're looking forward to that. And then on Saturday, we've made just a few tweaks to Saturday, to Saturday to make it even more fun. One big change, we've moved the free Kids Bash that has a lot of the playbooks and free snacks and all that. Instead of having that in the street, we're gonna have that at Central Park, where our beautiful new splash pad is, and we think there'll be a lot of nice green space and the totally redone shelter house. So we're excited about hosting that event in one of our parks, really close to downtown. Oh, one thing I forgot about Friday night is we'll have Art in the Park on Saturday. We're gonna kick that off on Friday night. We've had a lot of the artists that are coming saying, we'd kind of like a two-day show. So they're gonna be in Carnegie Lawn on Friday night from four to seven, I believe. And then carrying on there, we'll be, we'll be there, by we, I mean, Harvest Market. Harvest Market and Art in the Park will both be in that space and sharing it on Saturday morning. And then they'll have some music and things as well, so that'll be a lot of fun. We've kept the bags tournament, moved it from Friday night to Saturday night to allow more people, a little time to get there and participate. We've split that into a kit. We had a lot of families that said, well, we, this isn't just for adults, kids want to play. So we'll have a kids' bags and then an adult bags right there kind of in front of Peps. And then on Saturday night, we will be closing that street down for absolute pro wrestling. And that was an idea that was brought to us by Mike Bandi, that what a great idea. We know a lot of people have enjoyed that as an indoor event over the winter and other times of the year. So we'll be bringing that up for Saturday nights, it'll be a lot of fun. Then Sunday, of course, we finish off with the initial vote, open golf tournament at River Road. There's the River Canoeing with Billy Willie, as long as weather permits. And then we'll have another round of voices from the past. And that one's held in the library, so if you don't want to be out at the cemetery listening to all of Algonquin history, you can sit in the library on Sunday and listen to a second chapter of that, or the same chapter repeated. So that's kind of where things are at. One other new thing that we're doing, to kind of highlight some of our local museums. We have, of course, the POW Museum and the Historical Society Museum, and the Agony Motorsports, but we've added a new museum with the Iowa Racing Hall of Fame. So we're doing a museum pass, and if you get it punched and go to all the different ones, then you can enter to win a prize, just to encourage people to get out and get a little dose of Algonquin history while they're here. And we hope to see a lot of folks come back that maybe grew up here and have moved away. We'd love to see you come back and join the people for this event. And of course, those of us who are already here are living here. We hope you come out and enjoy some of the entertainment, a lot of free entertainment for families and people to enjoy. Any questions about the event? Well, if you're looking to get more involved, I know the chamber will soon be recruiting volunteers, so if there's something you'd really, really like to do, get your name in early, so you can do the thing that you want to do to help. It takes a lot of volunteers, and of course, I do want to say one more time, thanks to Avery and Amy and the Founder's Day Committee for all their work on this event, and we're looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thanks, Joanne. I'd like it'll be another fun, good weekend. Okay, we'll move to agenda number six update from the city administrator.
Yeah, this is a meeting for announcements, apparently, because I have a list this time too. First off, the Wolfen Center is currently closed for repairs. That includes the north half or the back of the building. We are right now in the process of replacing the concrete walkway there, and there'll be landscaping going there. So that Wolfen Center should, should open up on Wednesday, so just one more day of that being closed. Also, I want to encourage folks, if they haven't already, they can go to the city website and find links on there to take you to the Nebraska Florentine Parking Lot Reconstruction Project. Put together, the website, the project website put together by Bolton May. That provides an overview of the project, has construction updates, and then gives you an opportunity to subscribe for updates, either by text or email. So again, you can find information on that on our city website. And then a few other items, reminders are the Emerald Ashore Treatment Program. We do have that program that will provide a $150 cost share reimbursable for ash trees treated in the right of way, to treat up to two trees in the right of way. Looking at our, our public trees and the condition that they're in, we've really seen the effects of Emerald Ashore. So for those that happen getting treated, just a reminder to keep getting those treatments, but they will be subject to our review to making sure the tree's still healthy. But also, we will entertain new applications. But at this time, from what we've seen, chances are it's a right-of-way tree that hasn't already been treated. Likelihood that's in good enough shape to be treated successfully is pretty low. So still consider them, but may at this point focusing on reminding folks that are already in that program to continue if they wish. And then on the sanitary sewer fluid drain side of things, those inspections have been moving along here at a pretty good pace. There is about 30 properties that have yet to get inspected. So we will have a flyer that will be, that WHKS will be dropping off this week, reminding them of that, the importance of getting that inspection, and then if we need to make some phone calls as well. So folks would have received at this point multiple letters notifying them of that requirement. We really want to see that done, because if not, the consequences, a $100 a month surcharge until that inspection's completed. And if the city's paying for WHKS to do those inspections, but if they're out of town by the time that someone gets around to getting that inspected, it'll be their, their cost to have a plumber do that inspection. So we really don't want to go down that route. So we're going to be encouraging those property owners to get signed up for that. And then finally, on the personnel side of things, have an announcement I want to share with the public on our plans for the cemetery superintendent position. So since about Memorial Day, or a little bit before that, for about a week or so, we've been having cemetery overseen by our Parks and Rec Department. We are going to give it a trial run for the summer through Labor Day of that being under Parks and Rec. And in that time, evaluate how that process went. If it overall went well, if you troops who want to maintain that organization structure, make it permanent, or if you want to go back and hire a full-time cemetery superintendent. But given that we have that open right now, that is a good opportunity to try temporary trial of that reorganization. Like I said, we'll be evaluating that kind of Labor Day, and then bring that back to council to make that direction, or give us direction one way or another. So we'll be looking for feedback throughout that process. So those that did have that plan for that position, we did let them know, thank you for your application. At this time, we're not going to be hiring, but we'll agree on it.
Okay, thank you, Jacob. Move to agenda item number seven, this is a citizen's opportunity to address the council with any items not on the agenda. Don't see anyone here that would like to speak. So move to our consent agenda, and that includes approving the minutes from our June 2nd city council meeting, approving the bills to be paid this cycle, approve of Class C retail alcohol licenses for Billy Joe's, as well as Columbia Hall, approve a cigarette permit for Classic Stop, and approve the department reports and amendments from the various boards and commissions that have met.
Move to approve.
Second. Have a motion or a second, any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Don.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Jessica. Yes.
Motion carried. Under new business agenda item number nine, this is an ordinance regarding the use of consumer fireworks within the city limits to second and third reuse. Yes.
This ordinance amendment is in reaction to a recent legislative change. So our current ordinance reads that use of consumer fireworks without a permit are prohibited within the city year round. With this recent legislative change, there now, fire codes specifically allows for fireworks. Consumers and counties cannot regulate on certain days. So you have many in our ordinance to more or less say that unless otherwise specifically allowed under state law, they're not prohibited. So that way, if you change law in the future, we add another date, so lead dates, you don't have to rewrite our ordinance. So those dates right now that are going to be allowed are July 3rd from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., July 4th from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., and then December 31st, 9:00 a.m. to midnight. So that law will go into effect here July 1.
Make a motion to waive the second reading.
Second. We have a motion, a second to waive the second reading, any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Don.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Jessica. Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion to approve the second reading.
Second.
Motion, a second to approve the second reading, any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Don.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Jessica. Yes.
Motion carried.
Make the motion to waive the third reading.
Second.
Motion, a second to waive the third reading, any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Don.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Jessica. Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion to approve the third reading.
Second.
Motion, a second to approve the third reading, any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Don.
Yes.
Kathy. Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Jessica. Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to adopt this ordinance, any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Don.
Yes.
Kathy. Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Jessica. Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Agenda item number 10 is regarding transfer of ownership of police canine.
Yes, Brad Hillier has been a police officer with the City of Algonquin for the last seven years, has accepted, now began, a full-time employment with the Hancock County Sheriff's deputies next to county over. So Brad had a three-year-old German Shepherd as a canine handler. The county, Hancock County, has proposed reimbursing the city $15,000 for Brad to bring that dog with them at Hancock County. So this resolution approves an agreement with Hancock County. As ownership of the canine will transfer to Hancock County to allow for the dog to be utilized as a police canine, so under Officer Hillier's care. That $15,000 is a drag upon, that is the estimated cost to acquire a new canine and go through training and train a new handler. So given the circumstances, we certainly just quite see Brad go, but the strong relationship that he has with the canine and a fair offer by the county to take ownership of that canine, we recommend approving the agreement to transfer ownership.
Move to approve the transfer.
Second.
Motion from Don, second from Kathy, to approve this transfer of ownership of the police canine, any discussion?
I'll just add that the city will still have the one canine assigned to Grant Smith, as well as access to the Sioux County owned canines, as well as with the canine going to Hancock County being right next door. That's pretty common in law enforcement that those canines are, you know, going outside the jurisdiction and health and circumstances. So we'll still, still be able to get power in the lines of stop.
Vote called in.
Don.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Jessica. Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number 11 refers to the final transfer of Algonquin ambulance fund.
Yes, so this is kind of our, one of our last final acts with the transition of EMS from the city to the county. So back in 2023, when we voted to improve making county wide essential service, we put together a transition agreement, with that transition agreement, all of the fund balances from Seavell, Algonquin, and Sway City would transfer to Cassup County EMS. In exchange for that, as part of the deal, is if for some reason that Cassup County EMS would dissolve in the future, the fund balance at that time would transfer back to those entities to have that money to, if they had resumed ambulance service at that time. So we made an initial transfer, majority of those funds back in 2024, but there are still city bills coming in and out, which comes to be an issue, that we hung onto a portion of that. That, all the financials are now closed, so this resolution approves the final transfer to the county with a amount of $25,057.6.
Motion to approve the transfer.
Second.
Motion, Riley, second from Jessica, is there any discussion? Vote called in.
Don.
Yes.
Kathy. Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Jessica. Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number 12 refers to our general obligation bonds.
On the phone, we have Suzanne Gerlock, which is our financial advisor with PFM. She was going to drive up today and offered multiple times, but I told her that it was unnecessary, it seemed a bit excessive for being based in Des Moines. We enjoy working with Suzanne, but I thought it might be best to spend time. She was able to join us remotely to go over action items on this with the proposed issuance of $4.8 million in the price start bonds today. So with that, I will hand it over to Suzanne.
All right, good evening, thank you, Jacob. Good evening, Mayor, Capitol, happy to report the results of the sale today. We did go up to market, Jacob, if there's a result, we can pull that up. We received four bids from, from, we, seven different banks, including represented on this list of bidders today. Today, we took the market, $4.8 million, 20-year GOBonds, bank qualified. And, and I just want to congratulate the city on booty affirmation of the A1 rating, the credit rating of the city. That is the top tier of the single A credit rating, so congratulations to the city. And that is a result of all of the decisions you, every, every time you need, have the staff to maintain solid financials, good cash reserve, the, the, the economic development that's happening within the city. Jacob shared with me that city shops outside of its numbers, or resale shop for the, for the area to affirm the A1 rating, so wanted to start with that. And then, after the bids today, we calculated the winning bid based on what's called a TIC, that's the True Interest Cost Method. And the true interest cost takes into account coupons and the yields that are bid along with the unpriced amount that, that you consider is. And see, through a competitive sale, we put these bonds out to market, sell to market. You give us your best bid and the lowest TIC once today. And so as you can see, there's a range from 4.15 with Robert W. Barrett to 4.30, 15.3. Now, the winning bid from Robert W. Barrett is for the 24 members, that's specific. And Robert W. Barrett is based out of Milwaukee, Wisconsin, and they are sort of running the Midwest. Again, 24 different members, and they're shelling here, people from Missouri, Illinois, Arkansas, Oklahoma, Florida, New York, New Jersey, Missouri, all over Alabama, Minnesota, Virginia, North Carolina, California, Utah, and they're playing between them. The second place bid is from TOK, and they gave us financials, Oklahoma, they're out of Dallas, Texas. And they were just 0.05% or five basis points higher. And so that's the benefit of that competitive sale, whereas this is what a pick matter, we just get the best our customers can do. But in this case, we got this bid today and that's a 15 basis points, we would have paid TV security and five basis points for the second place today. Northland is also, Northland Securities, who's out of Minneapolis, Minnesota, and TV bid out of New York, New York. Now, when we look at pricing, we use the triple A B V L scale. And the triple A B V L scale is what, basically, it's, it's based on all of the bottom sales that happen today. The city price 0.2% over that triple A scale on average. Now, what that means, if I look back, is some of the sales we've had over the last couple of weeks, the price has actually been better today than what the city of Johnson did just a couple of weeks ago. So excellent, excellent pricing, that's a double A plus rated. And if you see who came out with a $12 million sale, and you priced by basis points or over that same 20-year term. So excellent, excellent pricing today. What that means is that over the 20-year term, the bonds you're gonna pay back net interest in the amount $2,126,929 on the winning bid from Robert W. Barrett. Now, after we got the bids today, we did have to revise. Our one of his, we still sold electric revenue bonds earlier this year, and they priced back in May. And together, our combined issuance between the electric revenue bonds and the city's GOBonds today could not be more than $10 million for bank qualification purposes. Now, if you want to go to the next, look through to the bond pricing report, page three, I believe, Jacob. You know, page three. So if you scroll down a little bit, you can see the price. So there's a lot of numbers on this page, but at the end of the day, the number I was watching like a hawk is we had to list that production number. Production, right above under precious count, was 102.8%. Because that was over 102%, we couldn't use the par amount of the bonds for our $10 million limit. We had to use par sub-premium. So we actually had to reduce the size of the bonds for all the bank qualified rules, because we told everybody we were going to be bank qualified. So that's why we made the adjustment to the bonds today, no other reason than that. So, and if you want to go back to Jacob, this clip, to the very first page to the source of excuses, this sale will put 41, under 42,000 of the city's project funds to do the next three years with those GIC projects, three projects, different rates of expense. This is better than what PFM had estimated. We had estimated a 439 TIC, so we came in almost 20 basis points better, 25 basis points better today. But it's within the tax rate market, and the next GOBonds we have scheduled in three years from now, 2028, to do the, the, around those three reconstructions. We have the city charter on a true GIC. And so with that, I'm very pleased with the sale, and this graduates, and PFM recommends that the city award the bond to Robert W. Barrett Company at a true interest cost of 4.155.7%. Happy to answer any questions, go ahead, now.
Anything, Jacob, you'd like to add? Okay.
The closing on this, we have scheduled for July 23rd. I'm not sure if we'll need to take any additional action to it now then, or Suzanne, this will be our last final step.
No, you'll, you'll get the lovely stack of all of the authorized documents for your work meeting in July. So you get your meeting on July 7th, that'll be, all of us will have the issuance resolution, the pending, and other actions, that you'll go through a basic back. Someone here will get it, hopefully they'll get a write-off grant funding picture. So yeah, this is the second to last that we want more meetings that will require action, and our progress will be delivered on July 23rd to paper or construction.
There's always one more thing to approve. So the action we'd be looking for is to adopt the resolution as recommended by PFM.
Motion to approve the resolution, you're asking bond sales to Robert W. Barrett Company?
Second.
Motion from Rodney, second from Don, any other discussion? Vote please Deb.
Don.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Jessica.
Motion carry. Thank you, Suzanne.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, Suzanne.
Bye.
We'll move to agenda item number 13, and this addresses the outdoor liquor licenses for Founder's Day celebration.
So this is a map of what we've done in recent years past, and I call it, should we get updated version? But this will be for Friday and Saturday night of Block State Street, between Thornton and Dodge. Reason for that update would be is this year, the stage mobile is going to be on the east side of State Street, so it'll be a little bit different. That, part of that reason is that the road destruction going on right now, our electricals are what we typically use for the stage mobile, are out of commission. So this would be the proposed layout, splitting between Tubbs and Billy Joe's, with the one change being that the stage mobile would be situated on the east side, facing west, and that kind of serves that block eight for the traffic.
Motion to approve the extension of the outdoor liquor license?
Second.
Motion from Rodney, second from Brad, any discussion? Vote please Deb.
Don.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Jessica.
Yes.
Motion carry. Agenda item number 14 approves a change order for the wastewater treatment facility improvement project, and Emma is with us.
Yes. Thank you, Heidi. Yeah, this is the fourth change order for the Algonquin wastewater treatment facility improvements, and this one has four items on it, and it totals of $39,225. The first item to see there was for safety improvements. You guys had approved for us to do a safety evaluation back in December, which was completed, and this includes all of the immediate necessary safety upgrades, so there was some railing and some grading that was deemed to be unsafe, and so the contractor for the project will go ahead and moving forward to order those and get that installed to improve safety of the plant. Item number two was some electrical changes that as we were getting into construction, it was discovered that some of the electrical items on site were not the same as the adult plans, so there was some changes that needed to be made in order for the new electric connections to operate properly. I can imagine that. And then the third item is an increased sidewalk. As we were onsite and lining things out, standing there physically, we realized, we're talking with the operators, that it's going to be, the operability of the plant is going to be improved if we add a small segment of sidewalk, so we've got an increase of $832 there. And then the last item is a door that aging condition-wise, now that we're looking at this a few years down, the time was like one period, the door is no longer in a condition that we would deem acceptable, and we are planning to replace that one as well, and that's a $6,000 cost. So, like I said, totaling $39,225, this being the fourth change order, that will make us, total change orders of $203,000 for a final change order, or for a final cost of Right now, that's sitting at a 0.7% increase from the original bid price, and on a project of this scale, we expect to see somewhere around 2% is pretty typical as far as change orders. So progress is going well with the plans, and things are, seem good, so we recommend that, for the reasons described, that you move forward with approving change order number four for the plant.
Any questions for Emma? Okay.
Move to approve change order number four.
Second.
Motion from Don, second from Kathy, to approve this change order, any discussion now? Vote please Deb.
Don.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Jessica.
Yes.
Motion carry. Thank you, Emily. Oh, that's right, okay. Agenda item number 15 approves pay application, so you want to get paid, huh?
The contractor does too. So this one is a pretty standard, you guys have been seeing these once a month, so this is pay request number 13, and this one came in at $945,852.32. This is pretty similar to the last few ones you've been seeing. There's a few items on here that are stored materials, they've got the receipts attached on here, and most materials are all being stored at the plant, so our inspectors had eyes on those. So everything checked out, looks good. So we're working on moving forward with the payout.
Do you mind, just because we might get sick of me talking about it, but kind of, you know, with this payoff, kind of some of the work that's been done here over the last few months, and it wasn't in this payoff?
Yeah, sure. So the big movements have been two of our biggest concrete tanks, so they have completed all of the concrete work on the new digester, and then they've also nearly completed all of the walls on the oxidation ditch, and I don't know if you guys have driven up by the park down there, but you can see that oxidation ditch is the very large one, it's about 100 by 300 feet. And so they've almost finished all the walls, and then they'll get working on the elevated decks and walkways, and that is the piece that needs to be up and running for nutrient reduction. So their target date for that is December, and they're well on track to get that going. A few other things, they've got the new garage erected, and they're just doing finishing touches on that. They've completely finished the UV basin, and the garage for the UV basin just has a few finishing touches for that as well. And then, one of the three clarifiers is currently in progress. And then, there's also a lot of underground work that they've done, they've got a good amount of the piping in, so that's not visible from above ground, but that's all looking good. So like I said, yeah, great progress, and I can also share some updated photos with Jacob and Barb that they can share with the council for your next meeting too.
To approve the pay application?
Second.
Another motion from Rodney, second from Jessica, any discussion? Vote please Deb.
Don.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reddick.
Move to agenda item number 16, that sets a date and time for the city fireworks.
This is a private vendor, is a vendor we have used for city fireworks for several years, you know, they still own my time here, so this action I'm going to approve the agreement of the downtown fireworks on Friday, July 4th. And this year, I think it was last year, we had the question on the weather, and so we went ahead and have the raid date scheduled as well in advance, so if we need to make that change, the raid date would be July 6th, if we need.
Motion to approve fireworks.
Second.
Motion from Rodney, second from Jessica, to approve this fireworks contract for the 4th of July, any discussion?
Vote please, it's a great show. Is there any parking inspiration for the market?
Yes, this year, Cassup Regional Health Center would encourage and prefer everyone to park elsewhere watching the fireworks. They closed their parking lot for the viewing of the fireworks this year, and also a reminder that East Lawn Cemetery will be closed as well. So probably the best place to watch the fireworks is actually in the grandstands at the Fairgrounds. So then you can see the ground displays as well as, as the, their aerial displays, so.
Are they going to have something set up so that people, you know, this will be a surprise to many people.
I think the hospital will have.
The hospital?
Yeah. I think the hospital will, I don't know about the cemetery, I guess, but.
And we've always had barricades at the cemetery.
Oh, yeah, I think the hospital is planning to have barricades, and I think there will be a person there, obviously, so people that actually need to go in can, I think is the plan.
Okay, that's good to know, because it'll be a surprise to many vehicles.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, the fireworks, I think Deb, do we have a red motion and a second? Yes. Okay, roll call.
Don.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Jessica.
Motion carry, thank you. Agenda item number 17 concerns the South Oaks subdivision final plat.
Levi Kettura, excuse me, of Castle Creek, has purchased the old trailer park on the south side of town, up at the Burrow Hotel. He has submitted plans to the city for a subdivision out there. Mostly, if you look, lots one through eight are going to be residential, lots nine through 16 are more, maybe light industrials, something like that. Since this property is within the two miles of the city limits, he has to get the city's approval on the final plat before the county will look at it. So this is just to refer the final plat to planning zoning, and we do have planning zone set up for Wednesday night to look at it, so. He's been working on this for quite a while, so he'd like to get it going.
So we need a motion then to refer this to planning zoning.
Make motion to refer this to planning zoning.
Second.
Motion from Brad, second from Don, any discussion? Vote please Deb.
Don.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Jessica.
Motion carry. Agenda item number 18, this is the final notification of Jeremy Proffman's term expiring on the tree board, and that term expires the 30th of June, the end of this month. This is a three-year term. Visiting with Jeremy, he would like to be reappointed to the tree board, so we appreciate his involvement, and I would recommend his reappointment. So.
Second.
Motion from Don, second from Jessica, to reappoint Jeremy Proffman to a three-year term on the tree board, any discussion? Vote please Deb.
Don.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Jessica.
Motion carry. Final agenda item is final notification of vacancy, an appointment on the planning zoning commission. We would entertain someone to fill the remainder of Dr. Leroy Strollman's term, and that expires the 1st of January of 2029. So if there's someone out there that would be interested in exploring the planning and zoning commission, we certainly welcome a phone call from you, so. With that, it is 5:45, and before I adjourn, I just wanted to thank Flynn McCann for being our videographer again this evening, and also thank Jacob and Deb and everybody for your work in keeping the city in good financial conditions, Suzanne reported, so appreciate all your work there. It's 5:45, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn today's meeting. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion from Rodney, a second from Brad. Meeting is adjourned, thank you, Leroy.